That's what I tried using yesterday.
I have some threads in my long.
I get that.
From the Philippines.
I get that.
The two, three pound area probably.
That works for more than an hour, hour and a half, and then I have to reapply.
But I can garden.
Yeah.
And it's very unconventional.
Well, yeah.
Well, cause he gets off his garden, it's like yummy. You get that much. I mean, I'm a row crop farmer.
All right. Focus. One minute. Pizza, it's on.
First year, there was one acre produced about twenty thousand and they put a quarter back, a third back into battle. So two thirds of that acre produced almost thirty thousand pounds of produce. Once you start looking at the macro, the trans, it's just insane.
Get the meeting going. Call the order, all right? So it is six o'clock exactly, and this is the June meeting of the committee as a whole. All right? We'll go around, take roll call. John.
I'm here.
All right, Ben.
I'm here too.
Jason.
Here.
Brad.
Somewhat here.
Somewhat here, okay. And Keith, myself, I am here, and of course, Holly is here.
Yay.
Anne is here, and Pete Hopkey is here. So we're all made it, good. All right, approval of a meeting agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Jason, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes to accept the agenda. Approval of the May sixth meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Brad.
Second.
All right, and John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, that brings us on presentations. All right, under student staff committee recognition, we have nothing in there. All right, onto our thirty. Okay, thirty sixty day planning.
Things that we have got going on within the next ninety days, and it's hard to believe we're in June, but in the ninety day window, you have our week to school.
Yes.
Yay.
Makes everyone feel happy, I'm sure.
Staff trainings.
Sorry.
Community as a whole will be July first.
And that's, that's something that we'll, we'll discuss here, cause I think getting it out, based off of our previous establishment, we talked about the first Monday being our committee as a whole, which then is that July first, which is a quick turnaround, and then having the third Monday as our regular board meeting, unless there's something specific like October, and getting information as far as state budget stuff, and then also in April, when we have that time to certify elections. But I've got a calendar up, and that's gonna be in F there, we'll talk about that here soon, so.
All right. Right? Holly, anything to add, realization?
Um, no, I get to meet Anne, so that's, we'll be talking about some transition here, so. The big one.
The big one.
Yeah.
All right. And then Jesse Goldberg, anything for her? He's not here. Pete, you've already spoken, you know, sixty day, August fifth. Any questions on this, from anyone?
Nope.
All right. Health.
So, did that get figured out now?
So I, I think what it was, it, it was looking at the, the resource that was out for preview was not the correct resource. After reviewing the correct resource for our middle school, I, I think some of the concerns that were brought up previously aren't, aren't valid, cause I, I think it's a, a resource that is, I think balanced in some sense, and then also typically get our scope and sequence, we're not gonna be covering, you know, the topics as well, so.
Health class.
Yeah.
Health class.
I was thinking health as in.
Health insurance.
Health insurance. I was like, wait a minute, what?
Welcome back.
What are you guys going to middle school for? Separate the teachers, I wanna get out.
Because, yeah, just, just coming back to, we, we had a discussion about the resource, and there was some question as to some of the content in the resource, and it was.
Textbook?
We had, yeah, we had time to, to review that. I don't know if you guys wanna elaborate on anything with that, so.
I don't.
So I, I think what we can do is, you know, at the regular meeting, we forward with that approval from the resource for the middle school, and then we're set, cause it is just a, it's the same banner that we use for high school resources, so.
Same banner, different book.
It is.
It is.
So, and it aligns well, resource wise.
Okay.
That is the recommendation.
Okay. All right, substitute pay increase.
So taking a look at it, over the past few years, a, a number of districts have really struggled finding and attracting and maintaining adequate substitute pool, especially for our teachers, and one way of doing that is a number of districts have, have went to increasing their substitute pay rate. A, a number of districts, a hundred dollars a day was, was the going rate, and I, I recall that, you know, early on in, in my admin years, that that, that was a pretty standard rate. However, with COVID and other stuff, we've seen that increase in a number of districts, or in that range between a hundred and thirty down to fifty, and we were still lagging with our hundred dollar a day, and, and this is where we need to really take a look at making that increase, so we're more competitive, and being able to attract substitutes on a consistent basis, cause I, you know, I can't say how many days we, we've gone without, you know, having adequate sub coverage, so.
Seems reasonable. Do we know how the district, the other districts that raised the rate, did that solve their problem?
It, it won't completely solve the problem, but it, it helps, because if, if a person is looking at this district and this district, and they're gonna get paid more, they're gonna lean towards that. So if, if we're, if we're at the same rate, then it becomes, which place do I like better? You know, so they.
Do you think we have subs that are that flexible, like I'm gonna go to Drummond, or I could go to Solon?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Do we have a, like a ballpark, how many, how, how, like how many days we use substitutes?
Just about every day.
Almost.
Yeah, I mean, cause, because I keep a, I keep a sheet, so then when I get, get the time sheets, I compare, and very, 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 very rarely do we ever not have at least one sub.
Well, does that really a different problem then? I mean, if we use one every day, that seems like a lot.
It, it is, but I, in, in some sense, but I will compare this, if, if we have opportunities for staff to attend professional development, a lot of it is occurring during days that are, are normal in session. Other things, if we have committee work that requires more than an hour of time, it's far more beneficial to bring that group together for the duration of a day, and really hit it, get that work done, and move on. So I, I hear what you're saying, but there, there are other reasons why we would have sub other than just being out.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, we're, we're always gonna be facing that piece, so. I mean, anyway, so.
Well, I figure how many you should give?
Forty, about forty. I was gonna say about fifty.
Okay. Times, times two weeks.
And then we have.
Or ten days, yeah. But it's just for vacation, so you're gonna figure.
They don't get vacation.
They don't, yeah.
Well, they have sixteen.
Teachers don't get vacation, they only have sessions and personal days.
Yeah.
But if you, you, if you figure the ones we have maternity leave, or if somebody's on a medical leave.
This was a heavy maternity year, yes, yeah.
Yeah, then also you gotta figure also coaches that leave early to go to games.
Our staff are really good about.
Usually they cover.
Yeah, usually they're good, but it's, say, development, yeah, it's more than just, I'm calling in sick. Well, right, I get it, and I mean, to be cheap about it, but I just wanna make sure that this is gonna help resolve the issue, and if it doesn't, we're just.
I think it'll help keep, I think it'll help keep some who are going to other districts to sub, because you're gonna get thirty dollars to fifty dollars more a day in neighboring district.
Yeah, it's to bring up the, bring up the, to make things, I mean, we'd still be on the, on with the lower of the, looking at the one thirty, and, and I, you know, reached out to the different districts to find out what they were doing, so it's just to try and level the playing field a little bit.
Something that would hiring a, one, like one full-time sub help out, is that something that we can do?
I, I would say.
Well, it's with the benefits and everything, well, I just didn't know, you know, I don't know where it sits as far as like that hundred and thirty dollars a day versus if we gave a wage, and their benefits, if it was wash, or.
No, cause actually, it's still like, if, hundred and thirty is still lower than your, than your base pay, because we, if somebody subs in the same position for twenty days or more, then they, they go up another level, and once they've hit forty days in a position, so like some of these ones have been subbing for maternity leave, then they, they're at the daily rate of our base pay person. So it takes a bit to get up to that.
All right.
How many school days do we have roughly?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty, yeah.
Well, student.
Or seventy five.
Hundred and seventy four, yeah.
Seventy five.
But it's, it, it still comes down to that point that you, you brought up, you know, the, the full-time substitute, I know a number of districts went to that option when they were receiving asset funds, simply because that, that was that unknown, as far as are you gonna have the coverage or not, and that's a, a way to ensure that you have somebody that can fill in, but, you know, tho- those funds are gone, and, and, and as Le- Leanne was expressing, it, it's not cost effective in some sense to have, you know, a full-time person.
And John, if you're looking at about what the increase would be for a year, when I figured the average over the last few years, it'd probably be around ten thousand with the, the increase in social security.
Okay, so we have more than one substitute per day sometimes?
Oh, yeah.
Cause just to have one, I mean, it'd be about five grand, the extra thirty dollars for throughout the school year.
Yeah, so we have, I mean, we have, and then, like this year, we were, we were also having substitute, um, no, I was gonna say the aides, but that doesn't count in, in the spectrum, so.
And these are all teacher substitutes, or are they also pair up?
This one is the, what we're talking is just the teachers.
Yeah, cause I, I, I think, you know, we were talking about that earlier, that the, the formula for our pairs and support staff, I think is good, because it's, it's based on a percentage of the base, and, and as the base increases, so does that, versus the teachers, it's, it's a set amount, and that, that hasn't changed, and that needs to, so.
So right now, this year, our teacher sub pay and our aides sub pay per day, probably, it's like four dollars difference.
Ninety-six. For a pair, a hundred per.
Yeah. How long have we been at a hundred?
I've been on the board nine years, it's been a hundred.
Yeah, it's been a while since.
I think, I think we can afford to.
Cause that, that's.
I hope it's not necessarily affordable, it's something we have. Yeah, it's not, yeah, not we can afford, we have to, to get, like he says, if I'm sitting at home and District A calls me and says one thirty versus a hundred, I'll take the thirty extra dollars to drive over there, and they might be doing things, hey, look, we got positions coming, and it's a way to attract, oh, come on in our door, take a look what we got, you might love it here, you know, so-and-so's retiring, you could be the next person we want.
So it's between pairs and pairs, between teachers and aides.
Right. It's just a. Yeah. So we're looking at the one thirty, is that what you're saying?
That, that would be the proposal.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, that brings us on to the school board meeting schedule for next year.
So once again, going off from the pattern that we've had previously, this is where we would look at, the only thing that is of, uh, that would be of difference would be the regular board meeting, and proposing that we bump that back to six thirty, because of the fact that right now, we've been operating with the Eagles, uh, Eagles Wings Governance Board meeting on the second Monday, and I, maybe it is a little personal, but not really, cause I think there's a few of us that sit in on that meeting, and then sit in all of our other meetings, so instead of having three Mondays in a row where there's meetings, meetings, and trying to get someone from the Governance Board to attend the meeting here, if we have them meet at five P M. on our regular board meeting days, and then just transition to the meeting here, and due, due to their jobs and whatnot, getting there at five, they can do it, they can't get here earlier, and they thought they could do it in an hour, but mercy sakes, I, I would say, having that transition from Governance Board meeting to here, and do that within that hour is kinda crazy, and that's where I'm making that recommendation, that our regular board meetings go to six thirty, but we gotta keep her.
No, I like the six thirty, that would.
Your loss. Oh, no. You guys are.
Oh, I like six thirty. It's hard to make it here at six, and I have to get out of work at four.
So July, we're going to the eighth, not the first then?
Uh, that, that was another thought, I mean, that's why I'm saying that the first is where our, our normal schedule is, and I, I'm asking, we can still keep it at the first, and just change this, I guess that's what I'm looking for.
I'm up here with the eighth, cause I know that a week prior is just effectively market weekend.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a crazy week, so.
So other than yourself, I mean, do we need someone from Eagles Wings at regular board meetings?
They presented our regular meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, 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 I would say, as things operate with the charter school being a part of the district, they should be reporting on information from the, from their meetings, and, and from the charter school perspective, and, and I, I know that Brittany Ager has been great in, in providing that information, but we really should have a board member doing it, and I know that the Governance Board meeting has, has a retreat tomorrow, we're really gonna be working on, on the structure of, of the Governance Board, and their roles, and, and responsibilities there, and that's, this should be one of them, and it makes it a lot easier if, if we're providing that meeting where they can get, go straight from one to the other, so it's.
Right, and if we can put them pretty much right up front on the agenda, then they.
That's correct, and they, and they are, you know, they, they provide that report pretty much upfront, so.
Like Holly, Leanne, myself, and Pete have all been at that meeting, and that's three weeks in a row.
I mean, I, Mondays are good, you know, but. Be more efficient that way, so.
Looks good.
Okay, so I guess, you know, taking a look at it, if, if there were items that would require your approval, this would be it, because this would throw us off from our normal schedule of the first and the third.
And make more than we approve.
This schedule as presented. Sorry.
Well, let's keep our meeting.
Second, and then we can have discussion.
As we have shorter than they used to be.
Okay.
So we're not.
So Brad, Jason, any further discussion? Everybody's good with this? Positive. Once, twice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes to accept this new school board schedule? Nice job, I like it too. So we are on the eighth or the first?
The eighth.
The eighth.
The eighth.
With, with your approval, it will be set for the eighth.
Okay.
And we'll push it out. The other thing that's kinda nice with that, with a, another commitment that I have, pushing our regular meeting to the twenty-second is beneficial as well, so.
I just like six thirty. I was gonna, I was putting in my goals. I'm up to November at least.
All right, that brings us on to open enrollment applications.
So, what, what you have on there are the open enrollment, uh, applications, just looking for your approval there, any concerns, questions, uh, it's keeping rather steady.
You log in.
I will say with the projections, it'll be pretty even.
Cause that, the open enrollment will be.
Why, a quick one.
About thirteen.
Thank you.
Well, it's, tho- those were the applications, um, we've gone through and we've vetted them, there's one that we will not, I'm recommending that we do not accept.
Okay.
Uh, but the rest, I think, are, I think are fine, yes.
Too much in the, in the weeds, but what, what do you use as criteria to not enroll some?
Sure, I, I think a lot of it has to go ba- or a lot of it has to be based on our numbers and criteria that we established in January as far as availability, but then it's also taking a look at services and prior disciplinary issues.
So there might be some services that student might need that we don't have.
That's correct, and, and that, that, those are criteria that, as we say, we can't accept, because if it's, if it's an expense above and beyond what we are able to.
Oh, no, they do, right.
We'd say, no.
Okay.
Uh, and then likewise, if there are disciplinary actions, we, we would take a look at that as well, so.
Cause I didn't see.
Do we touch, do we do that in closed session?
If, if there are specific things.
Well, the one that you said we're not gonna.
Right, and that, that was, yeah, just my recommendation on it, and that's, that's something that we'll have for next time, but just giving you a preview.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay. Sorry, I screwed you up.
Yeah, you missed. That's gonna be for the next four. Oh, let's see. Increase enrollment, first reading of volume. Reading of volume thirty-three, number one, updates on board policies.
So I do have a slug of them there, but the ones I listed specifically are ones that I definitely wanna take a look at with you, and just go through for some consideration, so the, the policy numbers twenty-four thirteen, thirty-four thirty-one slash forty-four thirty-one, it's, they're, they're basically the same, the, the only thing is the three thousands, we're talking about professional staff, four thousand is our classified or, or support staff, sixty-six eleven, seventy-four forty, point oh one, and we'll, we'll get into that, anyway, uh, and then the rest of them are simply small minor changes to boarding and whatnot, and, and can it choose to accept or not.
And that's all the hot, like the green highlights?
That's, that's correct, that's correct. Uh, so taking a look at, uh, going to twenty-four thirteen with health education, uh, go for you, we've been chatting about that a little bit. No, that this topic would come up, anyway.
Oh, yeah, ironic is what you're.
I know. Yes, that's what I meant. All right. So taking a look at it, there are a, a few different options here, uh, and you've got three different ones, the board authorizes the district administrator to determine the alternate assessment, or assignment, I should say, to be completed by the student that is similar to the subjects, uh, the second choice is, uh, the board authorizes the district administrator to determine, determine if an alternate assessment or assignment is to be completed, uh, and then the last one, the board will not require an alternate assignment, and this is, I'm glad you came in, Sierra, so Sierra is our health representative on the teaching staff, and could weigh in if there's questions, so.
Is this for the whole course, or just a specific?
Anything that we have opt in, opt in or opt out.
Yeah.
So, um, and, and, and that's, that's some of the stuff that we've talked about, if, if kids, if families choose to opt their students out of a certain topic within health, what is the requirement that we have? And it's, you know, for you guys to, to, do you, do you give, you know, myself and, and, and the teaching staff that, that authority to determine what?
With the alternative.
Alternative it is, if we do an alternate, or no. So that's, those are the three choices.
Yep. So what, no would be just? Just out that day?
That's it, that's it.
Okay.
So there's no requirement, so.
We, uh, I guess we just, I wanted to clarify, so can you, is this for per class, or can you opt out of the whole course?
I would say no, the, the whole course was not an opt-out, there were certain sections.
Just sections?
Yeah, that's correct. So.
Well, you guys are the educators, so I would say, you know, you should be empowered to make a determination.
Well, it's, so it's, it's a few different things that we have, and, and I guess it's just, you know, for, uh, for our regular meeting, which, which slayage we wanna have here.
Is, is there an example of what you'd have, is there an existing alternate assignment on any given topic?
That's here.
Do you want me to sit on that too?
Yeah, please.
Got it. Okay. Um, as of right now, I have not had anyone opt out, so I haven't been able to have that experience of what, um, what they're going to do, I guess, and I don't think in previous, you know, previous teacher, the stuff that was handed over, you know, there was no extra assignments, my, my thought is, is if they are opted out, then they'll be assigned, maybe in one of those topics, they struggled in throughout the year, you know, if we were in the nutrition topic, and they really struggled, didn't understand it, okay, then they would get, you know, a few extra assignment, or what, you know, depending on the, what they're opting out in, you know, they would get it, you know, maybe one assignment, if it's four days worth of stuff, one assignment nutrition, then maybe one assignment in, any, you know, CPR and A E D, you know, those other topics.
So you would necessarily create a whole new?
No.
Alternate universe?
I mean, I, that would've been my plan.
Yeah, okay.
If it was, it would just, you know, see where maybe they struggled, um, or honestly, sometimes some of the kids are like, I'm really interested in nutrition, what more can I learn about, you know, and then being able to just give them extra.
Oh, that kinda makes, kinda makes sense.
Cause it's still in health, it's just not based in the topics that they're opting out of to do, so that would be, that was, would be how I would've done it if I would've had, um, you know, someone opt out this year, but I didn't, so, but that would be my thoughts on how it would, how it would come, I guess.
So the middle option.
To do an.
Board authorizes the district to determine if an alternate assignment is to be completed, gives the most flexibility.
It does.
Yeah.
Which seems like, I like that idea.
Yeah. I, I like what you're proposing, if they, if they're struggling, or if they have a greater interest.
Yeah.
It can go either way.
Yeah.
Great.
But you get to make decisions, and you have the full backing of, of the board.
Works for me, I like that.
Sounds good.
Buy-in.
Any, any other questions?
What?
We got buy-ins.
Oh, yeah.
Buy-ins important.
Yeah. Did I have anything else to say on that one?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, the next one we had, uh, was the thirty-four thirty-one and forty-four thirty-one, and, uh, what this is referring to is military leave, and I will say that I cannot give a recommendation because of conflict of interest.
What numbers, thirty-four?
Thirty-four thirty-one and forty-four thirty-one.
So the first one that's highlighting that, the, the, um.
So, so.
So there's a diff- it's either you don't, or you get any compensation that, the difference, right? Is that what it say in the second one?
Check, so, so with you, Sarah, it, it's very clear with you, Sarah, which is that Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Act, as a district or as an employer, we are required to provide days off for military service, where it comes down to is unpaid leave versus paid leave, and that's been across the board, I will say that a number of places have not provided compensation, which is the norm.
I would do that first option then. Like I said, I, we're from, from my recommendation.
I feel like Brad, Fred, and John should kinda tell me what to do here, you guys both have served.
Well, the, 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 not the problem, I mean, a lot of people, when they do their military service, depending on your rank, you might be making more than you make at your regular work, some make less, so if they make less, you, I mean, some companies will pay full pay, some will pay the difference in pay, in other words, you're making two hundred dollars on military service where you would've made three hundred here, so the district would make up a hundred dollars.
That would be the second.
So if someone made more than could be known.
But I think if they choose that sec- second option, they can't use like paid leave, so they can't, what we call double dip, cause that's what we always did, we always double dip.
Ooh, the truth of telling.
Well, if you took vacation time from a regular job and then got paid in the military, you got two paid jobs.
Yeah, but you're using vacation time.
Vacation, which would be an option, which would be.
But.
That, that's, I.
But we don't have.
Right, I, I will tell you that I use my days to cover my absences, so, I mean, I'm still getting paid from here, but I'm using my days.
Right.
Not getting that additional benefit of keeping my days and getting compensated.
Right.
And that's, that's the big difference here, and John is actually very correct on this fact, that there are some employers that have paid the difference during deployments or, or other things. So, anyway, and yes, there are.
And doing that section two, the shall be unpaid unless employee elects to use other paid, that would be very similar to our F M L A plans, so.
When your, when your time runs out, then you're. When your, when your time runs out, then you're unpaid for that time afterwards, so.
Thank you for.
What's that?
Which one do we choose in?
Well, we'll choose that in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Oh, you just bring it up to.
Oh, you just bring it up for us now?
Yeah. I mean, the, the second one is, I think is.
The next item was sixty, so just once again, thirty-four thirty-one and forty-four thirty-one. The only difference is the staff classification, teachers and support staff. Otherwise, it's the same. Next one is sixty-six eleven, and this is dealing with your district-supported sponsored student activity accounts. So there are a few things that are being taken off, and it's just making sure that, you know, you, you guys feel like we're, we're providing the best option here. Towards the end, you've got, after one year of inactivity, the unexpendated activity accounts of discontinued student organizations shall, on the recommendation of district administrator and the board, approval of the board, or it's the principal and the approval of district administrator. So that's a choice that you have in there, if, if you guys wanna have that specific, you know, duty here. Likewise, following graduation, where do things go? I mean, so there's a few things to really take a look at.
Yeah, so basically, like if the class in twenty nineteen is up there, we can finally just say, that's off the books.
Right.
And that's what we've done in the past, and we've, we've always just rolled that over, and actually, for many years, it was that we brought to the board, it was just if those funds were, were left, then we rolled it into the general, the general funds.
So it's just like a couple of issues there to get some clarity on that. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Next, seven four four zero point zero one. Alright. And, and some of this is just getting into video surveillance and whatnot, and it's, that placement of surveillance, there, there are some specific items, as well as notification of surveillance. How, how are we doing that? And it's, I have a feeling we're gonna get a few more questions on this as you go through. Remember, we don't have to approve it this month. So we, you know, there are specific questions that arise as far as our choices and what's in that stuff. What are some of the implications we can take?
So we have, do we have some video surveillance?
We do.
Now?
Yep.
And do we have any notices or warnings?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we could add?
Right.
Just to disclose whatever it is.
Just the placards.
Yeah.
Yeah, a placard that disprove that we have cameras.
It used to have signs on it.
Nobody goes.
Right.
Just giving people a hint, hey, we're, we have cameras, we're all monitoring.
Yeah, that's what our, check. Cause that, yeah, as, as Mark stated, the buses have, have that, because all, all the buses have recording capability. But it's, it's the actual building itself, and we're going through that piece, so. So I just encourage you to take a look at, at some of those options there. I don't have a specific recommendation on any of those at this point in time, but. Seventy-five forty. This is technology. So as, as this gets into more specifics, yeah, just taking a look at how, how we're looking at our technology acceptable use and safety. And this would have impacts on our, our handbooks, and then also labeling the equipment. I know that, you know, there are things I'm involved in, all of our, all the technology is labeled, and has barcodes and all that jazz. I'm pretty sure that David was working on most of that, but it's just, this is formalizing if we're gonna do that or not, so. And I will say that request for personal use, that's becoming a bigger topic now with, with technology, and having that delineation that if you have a work computer, laptop, or device that is, that is open for open source records. So anything that's on there for personal use would be pulled as well. So it's making sure that people are understanding of it, and that the district truly owns this equipment, so.
Yep. Don't put anything bad on the, on the lawyer's devices. It's not your advice.
And make sure that you're going to the right places and not in various places, so. So those are the big changes there. Are the recommendations down? And then the last one is seventy-five forty-four, which is use of social media.
All kinds of options here, I think.
It is. So, and I know that one thing that, that we're trying to do is, is promote our, our brand in our school district by social media. But it's making sure that we're maintaining and approved social media platforms. And, and some of the discussion we've had, or have had with a few people is, we've got social media accounts for many different things, and I'm not sure about the oversight, and then trying to reduce that down to stuff that we're managing, so. Managing that content. Is that, the more accounts you have, the more open we are to different complaints, potential litigation, et cetera, so.
Do we even know how many we have?
No, not officially, but that's, that's what we.
We should have one official one, I think.
That is correct.
Yeah, but I know, like, there are solo springs athletics.
That's why I was like, are we talking like, you know, our own volleyball that we created?
Volleyball.
That stays up to date with our information, you know?
Right. And it, and it's that, getting some delineation between, what is the district site, and then if there are clubs, they're doing their thing, then it's a club thing, it's not a district-sponsored thing. Cause, yeah, we've got multiple sites that are going on, so.
Well, when you say club, I mean, that's different than like the volleyball.
That's correct, that's correct. That's why I'm saying that delineation, club versus district-sponsored, so.
Yeah.
So, that was the last one that really had some different options out here, and just trying to highlight those for you guys, cause you do have options one, two, and three. And trying to figure out where we can go with this.
Yes.
And if you guys have questions, we can certainly answer those. Okay.
Okay.
Ready?
Got it. So, okay, so we need to.
That's what I'm asking, yeah, that you guys, take a look at that, if you have questions, come up.
Talk about it next.
Yeah, it's just gonna all be at the school board meeting.
Right. And I would say, we, we can list out the questions, and then we can even bring it back for a second reading in July, and answer more questions there, and.
Maybe Dave could explain those options a little bit more, too, like there's, with the options.
Well, I mean, even with the, the social media, I mean, I read some of it.
Right.
But.
I would say that his involvement with the social media is precluded, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I will come up. As a coach, and like the comment I just made, do we get an assay or an input when we get into these types of options? My frustration is our athletic page is not up to date with my volleyball stuff. And if we are now, I'm sorry to say this, but if we're micromanaging, you know, how we do this, then I feel like one person, it would be, almost need to be like one person needs to be hired to make sure everything is updated. Because if, you know, I'm not saying it happens, but you know, if we can't have our volleyball page anymore, well, then half this town probably wouldn't know when we, you know, have events going on. So, and I get that. I understand that it's a lot to take care of. And that quite frankly is like a one-person job with everything that we have going on, which is awesome, but.
Check. It's, it's gonna take more than one person to have, to put things together, but managing one site and making sure that all the information is there. Cause I, I understand where your frustration is, because if you have multiple people that are trying to maintain different site, it becomes kind of.
Can I say something too? It, it shouldn't be on Facebook, it should be on our school website, because many people in the district who were employed by the district don't use Facebook. It should be on our website, I feel. I think that's where people should be.
But a lot of people use Facebook and don't go to the district website.
Exactly. I, I understand that, but then they both have to be kept up to date.
Yes.
And that's only one expression of social media that.
Yeah.
Instagram. What do you mean by you're kept up to date? Just like a page that's languished there for a while, or you're gonna be at all?
That, I, I think is not managed well, and there's just information that's not there, or there's.
Well, and who's the element, and who's main, who's overseeing comments and?
That's what I was just gonna ask too.
Yeah, well, I mean, as a, as a head coach and a district employee, Sierra should be able to manage her page for.
I would say that.
We need to, you know, we have a few out there, and.
There, there are ways of managing it within one.
Right. I was just gonna say, even that, even that opportunity where if you create one, you know, however it is, and those passwords are given to that person that, you know, so then they, they're the admin on it, you know, maybe not specifically the coaches are, if that's not what is approved, you know, but.
It's.
I'm just thinking of athletics being all over the place.
And that's, and that's what we're trying to get rid of, is, is making sure you have one stop, one place, and that's it. And I will say, I've been, I, I've had experiences where you have multiple people going on to put things on.
Yeah.
But it's one site.
Right.
Because I, I, that is the, the one thing.
The one-site, multiple administrators.
Yes. So it's not just one person, because then you have a single point of failure. Not, not a, not a wise idea. But you can have multiple people, but you know who those people are that are administering that.
Which makes sense too, because, I mean, cause I hear what you're saying, but then at the other, the other side of that is then there's the baseball page, the softball page, the cross-country page, the choir page, the track page, the volleyball page. So you, if you wanna find out what's going on with volleyball, you have to follow that one, and then those subsequent ones, instead of funneling them all into one, where then, as a community member, you just go to like the athletic page, and I can say, oh, volleyball's having this, basketball's having this, kinda thing, or these things are going.
And there might even become certain, you know, fundraisers, fundraising for your volleyball, and then the next week it's basketball, cause there are people who love to come to fundraisers, instead of going to fifty different places, where it'd be one stop, one shop, and it gives everybody equality across, basically equality across all sports.
And I feel like there's, there's never a good answer for this, but then if you have all of those on one, can you scroll through to be like, oh, let me, did they forget to put a volleyball post? Did they forget to put a basketball post? You know, cause there's so many of them on one page. I see the caveat for both of the, you know, how to.
And where we link back to the, so the other thing is linking back to the web.
To the district site, yeah.
That's it. So this is where it's twofold, and Jen has it right. We're putting the big things on, on our website, because we wanna highlight it there. But then we're also using that one site with Facebook, where it's, it's linked back and forth.
Right.
Cause I, I will say, one thing that's hard is, if you have a person that comes in and is new to, new to the district, or whatnot, how do you find the social media page for?
You're right.
You know, volleyball. Well, somebody's gotta tell you, because it's not necessarily linked to our website or anything else. And this is, if we're concerned about communication and selling our brand, we need to condense this a little bit.
What if you have one, and then you link everyone else's on there? So if it's the one? Hey, I'm just, I'm just, I'm really struggling, because we try to do amazing things for advertising for volleyball with different things, and during the season, we post so much, and that's just volleyball. And I know cross-country is the same, but that's the best part about it is, people like to see that our athletes are more than just athletes, you know, and they like to see, you know, and.
Yeah, I, I agree, but that's, that's where you have that one, you're seeing more than just athletics, so.
And just remember that Facebook's working against it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is Facebook, so we say social media, we've talked about Facebook, like Instagram, do we have school-based Instagram, TikTok, Chat Face, Snapchat?
There's Instagram, yeah. Yes.
There's.
There's so many ways to communicate that communication doesn't get out. That's what's so frustrating.
Yeah, that is.
Well, and as a parent, I don't want the school platforming some of this, there, there's social media, like I don't want my kids pushed into some of these platforms.
Go to social media to find it.
Well, yeah.
I think.
But I mean, as long as we're doing it across multiple.
But like, to follow the track meet on Friday and Saturday, you have to have had the Instagram account to click to the results. That's the only place you could find it.
Cause it was only there.
No, I went to P T timing and found it.
If you know that, I don't know that that's what it was.
But that's, but those are things that we need to work on as far as communication, and if we have.
That could have went on this, there's all kinds of places that could have went.
Right, I'm just, but it was from Instagram, that's where you would get it from, but it wasn't on our school website.
What I don't want as a parent, is the school pushing platforms on my kids, by saying, wow, you need to sign up for this if you want information about the club.
That, that will never be the case. It's providing an alternate.
Communicate to, within district and into the community.
That's.
And there are more ways to communicate with each other than we can on count now, but like, right? Cause I have parents that only wanna have communications through Facebook Messenger, and others that only want through email, and there's others that want to do it through text. And so, all of those, so part of it's communication within a district, but part of it's how we communicate to our communities so that they know. And all the people within the community are using those various platforms to get their information. And so that becomes the problem, because it's not just about, cause I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's also how we're communicating that out, and that conversation we've been having. Like, how do we make sure that we are engaging with our communities so that they know what's going on up here?
So nested in, I, I'm not, that's where this policy feels way too, because if there's no, if, if there's no one, if there's no engagement on social media, now it becomes, an educator says, use this platform, this is how we're gonna communicate. All, I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's how big this policy is, like.
Well, and Facebook is for all the people that are sitting in this room. And any of the students that are in the school are really not using Facebook, that they're on different social media platforms.
Old people use Facebook, trust me.
Well, you're not necessarily talking about communicating to students.
Yeah, it's just the.
But I am, because that's the policy that we're, that's, like, this policy, we wanna.
And that, and I guess that's why I'm asking, that, that we look through this, review it, and if there are things that we need to take a look at, then we address that in our field meetings.
Yeah. I think we can win. I think everyone can win it.
Yeah, of course. We haven't agreed much.
Alright.
I was gonna say, if they wanna know anything, they have to come to a school.
They should call P E.
For everything.
Alright. There we go. Alright.
Alright. Gee, alright, open enrollment. Oh, we just, sorry. Handbook. Handbook, sorry.
So, so the middle school, high school, and the elementary, if you click on it, they're linked in there. Yeah, there is. And, you know, there, these do not have, other than updates, they're not a ton of changes. However, the P B I S team has started drafting a no-phone policy, which they've been doing some good work on. It's not in a final product yet, but that will be part of passing the torch on to Anne to carry that conversation on. They've done a lot of work on that. The feedback I'm getting from staff is that they would like to see a no-phone policy here at school. So there, there could potentially be some more updates coming, but the vast majority of it is there, so. And like I said, not a ton of changes, some cleaned up, cleaning up in language, but nothing structurally major in there. But I do anticipate that conversation coming back to the board.
The no-phone one?
Yes.
Great.
Cause right now it's still in there as the way it has been.
What page is that on?
Um, if you control F, find cellphone, it'll come right up. I just did it here.
He's on my back.
I'm still just on Facebook, so.
Um, let's see.
I'll find it, that's, that's mine.
Technology vision statement?
No, keep going.
Thirty-six, page thirty-six. Use of cellular phones, earbuds.
Okay.
That, that's our, this is our current policy.
This is the current policy, so I'm anticipating a cellphone, cellphone change coming your way.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna anticipate some potential updates to this. Alright, food service, policy.
Is there safety in that?
Yeah.
Sorry, that was high school, middle school, Anthony Elementary. Sorry, that was high school, middle school, Anthony Elementary.
Um, no, no.
Sorry about that.
They can have their phones.
How much you get them?
It'd probably be easier to say, put your phone in your backpack, so. Okay, uh food service policy update, first read.
Alright, so Jen Laffler was was so gracious enough to share some information from DPI visitors that we had uh this past month, uh came in and did an audit and uh I might say that Jen and her team did a phenomenal job. Said, uh what what was the verbiage? One of the best visits ever.
For the pet public health nutritionist, she said, I will the record for her best review ever.
Oh.
She's coming after it with only your third one.
But but some of the things that came out of that is uh what we have here, uh special dietary needs. I know this was a topic that we had earlier in the year as far as what what is the district's responsibility when it comes to special dietary needs and and having an actual policy dealing with that. It is not a topic that comes up very often, but when it does, it is confusing, complex, and yes, interesting to try to navigate. Is that inaccurate to put it? So uh so we've got some verbiage from the DTI there, uh as well as uh also local wellness policy. And it's an online builder and I linked a Google form uh that we can actually walk through and build our own policy on this. So we do have a wellness policy currently, but it is fairly limited when do we start talking about what DPI is asking for. So.
There's yeah, there's some actual verbiage that they require in our, that we just don't have right now in our policy.
Joe.
In, yeah, in a few different policies that we have. They want you to use their actual verbiage that comes from the USDA. And it really, they have the policy builder on their website. You just add your stuff in and change anything. And what they did want to make clear to me is that if we have it on policy, that has to actually be what happens. Because like right now, our unpaid meal charges say, if you go below twenty-five dollars, you will no longer be able to eat lunch. And I told them flat out, that doesn't happen. I don't ever tell the kids they can't eat. I don't even know what their bill status is when they go through the line. So she's like, well, that really, if you have it in policy, it has to actually happen in reality. So she said, what we like, have been telling schools, because she said, I see this in lots of different schools, that this is what they have, but she said, we've been telling schools to put out a policy that basically says, once you become, you know, below twenty-five dollars or whatever, you'll be encouraged to get your bill current. You know, that's, but to not put in there that they won't be able to eat unless you're really going to do that, which I would never do, so. They gave me some verbiage of what we could.
Yeah, so who, do you track their accounts for meals?
Not anymore. I used to do that, but that was something that.
So do you do it?
We got handed off to um Lisa Bosick.
No, Lisa. Bosick, correct.
Okay.
But it's, um.
It's in Skyward, man.
It is in Skyward, but it's one of those things where we we send out the bills every week or every couple of weeks to to people. And then there's a letter that can go with that says, your your balance is above this and you need to either, you know, make arrangements with the school to make payments towards that, you know, pay it up, or please send um meals with your students.
Yeah.
The most leverage we have is at graduation where in order to to graduate and participate, they have to have it paid to an extent.
To to participate in the ceremony.
Yes.
Uh it's very specific in language. We we can't take any disciplinary action. We cannot deny them graduation.
Graduation.
Right.
It's participation in the ceremony, so.
Just can't watch the stage.
Yes.
So. So so those.
And when we've had somebody that has not paid, they've still walked.
Okay.
So some things that we need to to take a look at. Um and I would encourage us to to look at those pieces if you can. I mean, go onto that uh wellness policy builder. I will say there are multiple pages. I walked through it. I didn't finalize anything, but there are lots of questions and things that we should discuss.
So, and maybe this is something beyond our breadth. So if if there's someone with special dietary needs, does the, does it matter if this district has the capability of meeting that or not? I mean, in a large outfit, you probably could, in a smaller one, I I don't know if we can always accommodate someone or not.
Well, but that but that's it is is with with the district, when we start talking about special dietary needs, you're you're talking about getting not by brand name, but at least the equivalent, what we normally order, if it's above and beyond. What what are the limitations on what we cover and what we don't cover?
Right.
And and it might not be the exact piece, but it can be something equivalent. If if a parent requests a specific item, it's on them.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause we can, we can. If my kid only drinks oat milk, then.
Well, we but we 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 offer, we offer alternatives that are very similar.
But it. Soy milk and almond milk.
Okay.
Right. Versus i- in in a previous life, I had a parent that said, my kid will only eat this specific brand and type of whatever. I'm like, sorry, we can't get that through our provider. You'll have to provide it.
Okay.
And and provide methods for that.
If the kid wants Jif Peeney, but Peeney.
Yeah, you, I mean, we do, if they have uh something from the doctor that says they.
Like a health.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, we have to provide something that that, you know, falls into that.
Got it.
And tho- those are the specifics.
You'd be surprised what she has available to her now compared to years ago.
There there's there's quite a bit.
Right.
But but we, because, but we do say, you know, it ha- it can't be a preference. It has to be a note from the doctor.
Right.
Like you can't just say, oh, my kid only likes to eat pink things and I have to get, you know, pink things.
And we just can't accommodate that piece, so, yeah.
Okay.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Any other questions up there? Okay, virtual summer school? It's back.
It's okay, just.
She is, alright. She's got the next two here, so. And so yes.
So what does it say there? I can't read on here.
So virtual summer school, and I know that we talked about this last month and and we we held off.
No.
Uh just to talk about this a little more, try to get a little more information. Uh what we received uh from the DPIs is uh, you know, with with our recovery, credit recovery, we can do that and require those students to be here. That's wise because they'll generally require more assistance and those courses don't have an online person there, so person or person here would be supporting them. Uh where we get into that difficulty is if we have students that want to push forward and do additional courses. The the person from DPI was very clear, you need eighty-one hundred minutes of direct instruction. Well, okay, what does that look like? And I I would say that having someone dedicated to be here for that doesn't make sense and having them come in to do that just is a little bit too cumbersome to count for summer school. It's just, it's not feasible to count those courses towards our summer school, if that makes sense. And that's where just saying that, uh taking a look at those virtual courses to move forward, that this would not be something that the district would cover, but have available for them. And if you wanna add anything to that.
I'm, the one thing that I would like clarification, so I know I have a couple of virtual students who did not do well this year and they can't do the credit recovery. They have to take the class with a teacher, so that would not be an option then during the summer school. They'll have to wait and make those classes up in the fall. Is that what we're saying?
No, I.
No, that's for getting ahead, for catch up, right?
But I, but 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 there's two different payment plans for credit recovery, because there's the credit recovery where the, it's like fifty-five dollars a class and then there's one that's two hundred and forty-five dollars a class. So the two hundred and forty-five dollar class is one that has an instructor, so they would have someone to teach them the class. The credit recovery is self-paced. You take a test. Okay, if you're in biology, you did not understand cells, but you understand genetics from this test, so you don't have to do any of the genetics work, but you have to do the cell work and work like that, so they can get through it sometimes fairly quickly. Where if they just totally didn't do biology at all because they had a breakdown or I I had several students that I had to take classes off of their list because it was, it was I make a decision with some of them that it's better that if we just focus on three classes getting through than seeing that you have six classes to get through, so I take them off, so they never had it at all. They would need to take it with an instructor. And is that, are you still considering that credit recovery then, even though it's a different?
That, a- a- as I would see it, if we're having a person here and counting it towards that summer school, it'd be the first option with the credit recovery. We're going through the specifics, helping them get to the finish line. If it's a full course, like you're talking about, I I just don't see how you feasibly do it and include it with that summer school.
Okay.
It it would be an expense that the district would have and and.
Right.
Yeah, and it's just additional expenses.
And I and I really can't see the 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 students that I that I'm thinking of that are gonna do this, I can't see them coming down here anyways. Cause they live in, the one I know lives in Superior and they would not want to do.
Right.
They don't do in person for a reason, so coming to summer school.
But for whatever reason, they didn't do it when they were normally scheduled to.
Right. So I I just wanted to put this out here because like today I spent like two hours putting in classes for a senior who didn't do work ninth, tenth, eleventh grade. Finally, in twelfth grade, realized I need to graduate and she worked her butt off, I will give her that, but I mean, I think I put twenty classes in for her this year, because she finally made them up, but I'm I'm trying to avoid that situation. It's they should be getting, you know, they should have this many credits at the end of ninth grade, this many at tenth grade. So we don't have that.
Right.
I'm trying to help kids not reach that point.
Right. We don't want them hitting the racetrack their senior year. We want them on the racetrack.
It's an awful hard, and this one that did all those, I mean, she she still has like six classes before she can get her diploma and she has till June twentieth to do.
So so that that brings up a different topic where we need to be talking to those kids every time.
Yeah, we need, there's something has to, we have to do something with those.
But they could go beyond their normal graduating year to make up.
How, I don't think, I don't know how it works for, that's if they're in special ed.
If they don't tell their twenty-one or something.
If they have a disability.
If they're, have an IP, I believe.
So regular, model student, once they're normal senior year graduates, they're either in or they're out.
It it gets. It's very gray.
Okay, just like.
And I think that's where we would have those meetings with those students and parents and figure out where our plan is. And I I would say we would do that.
Yeah, we need to be more proactive, so we don't end up in this situation. And that's what I'm trying to, that's why I brought this up.
Right. Right. Right.
So ninth or tenth grade is when something should have occurred, but I mean, I.
But that's 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 a practice that we have, that we I have identified. It still comes back to the point of if we're taking a full course during the summer, it's an expense and it's it's not something that we can include in our summer school actively at all.
Right.
And that's where I would say the recommendation is tho- those students and families, they need to take care of that class.
Yeah.
We'll support them, I mean, in that sense, but.
One thing to look at is virtual learning is still a very new thing in far as education goes in timeline. I mean, we're talking, what, five years mainly, since it's been mainstreamed?
Right.
Well, we. Yeah, I mean, really, a lot more have done it since COVID.
Yep.
Um, I'm trying to think how long we've had the program, probably.
We've had online.
I first got on the board, but it was a very generic.
But full-time online.
Cause. Full-time, yeah, well, Lily, did she do eighth grader online or not?
I'm sure you're asking.
Yeah, she might.
Anyways. Yeah.
Well, cause I I'm thinking she's one of our long-term ones is why I was thinking that.
So it's it's been around for a while, but it's and I agree, it's still, it's still evolving.
It's still.
And every time I do something, I come up with, oh, this is something I need to stress to parents about and, you know, I mean.
Right, yeah.
I've.
I believe you're right, Brad, ever since COVID, it's become more of a thing. Parents could realize, I could do this.
Well, some kids.
Send them to school.
Excel at it.
Ex- yeah, some kids are, yeah, they do much better.
Yeah, yeah, there's. I feel there's two paths with virtual. Excel, oh my goodness, why are you doing this?
Yeah, yeah. But it I would say at this point in time, when when we're talking about summer school courses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or courses that would be taken over the summer, it's an additional expense, cannot be accounted towards our summer school in an effective manner. And that's where I would recommend that the co- the district is not covering that expense.
Okay.
If it is truly credit recovery and they're here and we're doing that, yes, but when it comes to a straight-up course, I would recommend no.
Okay.
And then should we, then a family would bear the cost for?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would we wanna approve this tonight?
It I I was gonna say, I need this one approved because I have parents wanting to find out what they can do for the summer.
Rather than wait for the two seventeen.
That that is, that is an option that you have here.
I will make the motion to reprove the virtual school, summer school uh presentation as presented.
Can we play?
So.
The way it's part of it there.
Consider district funding for remedial coursework that is completed on campus.
Yeah.
And recommended opportunity for students to complete coursework or additional credit, but expense not covered by district.
Second.
Okay, Brad and Ben. Are there any further discussion?
I just want one clarifying question. Any student can take additional coursework. Not, I mean, so if, on that second, so if I, as a parent, am gonna pay for it, it's not because my kid needs a credit recovery. It could be because we just wanna achieve something.
That's it, exactly.
Alright.
Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those who oppose, motion passes. Great job, Jen.
I will uh draft something tomorrow and have you read it before I send it out to the jurors.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
I'm next, up for the next one too.
Senior seminar.
And I'll need to know something on the fees for that, because the parents are coming in and saying they're gonna take that.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be going, who knows what the fee is gonna be.
I have a list of the fees.
Yeah, yeah.
So the the senior seminar class, it's something that has been in our catalog uh for a while and and it has been our it's been the school council that has provided that instruction for our seniors. But taking a look at and and making sure that we have the right focus. I know that last year we had academic and career planning and we brought that to the table and implemented it. Where I would say our best bet is instead of providing a senior seminar course, is that we're providing times to meet with seniors, to go over scholarships, to go over applications, et cetera, et cetera, which doesn't require a course and a lot of time. Or you can schedule that during our Eagles hour and and just give them updates on, these are the things that we're doing. More advantageous would be actually adding in coursework earlier on, whether it's ninth grade or tenth grade. Where we're starting to take a look at career fields, taking a look at those paths and getting more deliberate i- in that planning process. Because once you hit that se- that senior timeframe, it's like, oh snap, I need to get get my approval group, so to speak, and get things done. And by that time, it's way too late.
Fantastic.
So.
What's what's the summary of the senior seminar now?
Well, uh it's kind of.
Not this year.
Language a little bit.
Last year.
It's simply because, like I said, it was something that was offered by our school council and that's, next year we'll have that.
What I believe that it came about for was, the state of Wisconsin wants us to do academic and career planning with the kids. I think that our our ori- when that originally came through, the council that we had wanted to be able to say, we are doing something, so we put this into place. I don't think it's been used that way in quite some time now. And I agree with Pete, I think it's a little late to do all that career planning. Like, if you've decided you want to go to Northwood Tech, you should have known that maybe a little earlier, so you could take advantage of like our Start College Now and all of the opportunities that we have. If you find out you're in your senior year, it's a little late.
So did we design it to run as a a regular class?
Yes.
Not, okay.
And they were doing things like um resume building, um you know, they would apply to colleges if they, and things like that. And and I think that yours and it was always run first semester of their senior year. I still think that's a little late for a lot of those things.
I would agree, Sarge.
Yeah.
You should be thinking about this your junior year.
Yeah, and even earlier. And like I said, I think the intent of it was to say, look, we have this class, so we're meeting these needs. Where I think it needs to be something that we start much earlier and a little bit each year, we build, we we do our, you know, let's figure out what your interests are, do it in sixth grade, seventh grade. I mean, I still don't know what I really wanna do in life, but um kids change their. kids change their minds, you know, I mean, I've had kids as seniors say, what happens when I get to college, I don't wanna do it? I said, that's part of going to college, you might find out you really like to do this instead. Uh, you know, we we know there's gonna be a senior next year who doesn't really know what he wants to do yet, right?
That's right.
So, yeah, I got one of those too.
So the the, this is just to do away with that as a course?
That is correct.
And and attack it some other way?
That that's, that's it, I mean, we've got some ideas.
And we have the financial literacy class that will be a requirement by the state of Wisconsin. It is, it will be next year, I think, it's not.
Twenty-five, twenty-six is when it is official.
Um, so I put it into the schedule that it would be instead of second semester, it would be all year, every other day, cause it's a semester class. So, one of the things that I know senior seminar did was it would go over FASs, so the application for student loans. Well, that's part of the financial literacy class, let's do it at the time that it's gonna happen. You know, we should teach it in October, right, about when it's gonna be the time to apply, instead of in, uh, April, when it doesn't, when it's too late.
Wow, that's great.
So.
Teach adults, cause that's what it does.
Do you have an easy button?
I just told my daughter today, would you like to take my financial literacy class, she goes, no.
No, but I agree with you, it's like you say, John, yeah, it's, I mean, I just, I'm sitting with my kids doing FASs, but but it's good for them to understand, this is why we have to do FASs.
Right.
Because we made our daughter sit, you're gonna sit here and you're gonna participate.
But and and part of like being the financial literacy class, it's talking about what's, what it means when you take out these student loans, it's not just applying for it.
Yes. Yes.
It's if you take this, you're gonna be paying this, if you take this, you're gonna pay this and the importance of why you should apply even if you don't think you need to go, you're gonna go to school, cause what if you decide to and you do need the money? So, I think having that financial literacy class all year gives them that opportunity, plus like Pete had said, we can, if we need to talk about applying for scholarships in December, we could start then with them. We can add some of the things that were in senior seminar, we can, we can combine into that instead of having that.
I don't like it this. I like it. Great work, this is fantastic. No, this reminds me of, uh, what was it called, Consumer Math, when I went to school. Checking, savings, or applying for school, what is it going to cost you? Interest rates, yes.
Oh, yeah, you, the financial, I've, first when I started teaching, I thought it was kinda funny, cause I really shouldn't have taken this class, but it is.
Yeah.
As an adult, it's like, yeah, this is life, I tell the kids now, I don't wanna see on Facebook in ten years, I wish they would have taught me how to do taxes instead of an angle on a triangle, because you're being taught it now.
Yeah, no, we did the same thing in Consumer Math, we had to do tax returns.
Right.
Anyways, move on.
So, so that would cover that stuff. So, I don't know if on there you have the change in credits, but do you remember last board meeting or the board meeting before you took out the credit for? We added that health credit in eleventh grade and then we moved our electives back down to seven and a half.
Yep.
Taking out senior seminar, we put our electives back to eight, to what we had before.
Okay, sounds good to me.
So this next meeting or do that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for giving this. No, no, great, Jen, it's good to know. Batting cage.
I'm coming.
Are you back, Sierra?
I'm back and I made copies of the thematic soul.
So excited about this one.
Um, okay, so what I wanted to, I don't know whether it's voted tonight or or not, um, is we have the, an actual batting cage donated to the softball team and baseball team, whatever, to be on the school property. Looking for approval for that to be put up down by the softball field. So, on the top left corner, that's kind of like an aerial view of what it would look like. Um, and then where the air goes to the, um, to the east of first baseline, you know, out towards the back is the thought of where it's going.
Is that on the other side of the, are those volleyball courts?
They're still there, so that would be, so this is kind of southwest or southeast of the volleyball court, so the right next to first baseline. If you go all the way down to where the fence stops, right to the east of that, right next to it. So, it's still in the process, I don't have the official case of two businesses possibly donating some of the materials, um, for this or all of them. That's kind of still in the works, so that, I was hoping to have an answer by today, but we don't and that's okay. So the price there that, at the total of eighteen sixty-five is kind of what it would be if no one donated anything for this batting cage. The best part about this is I, the, I mean, best part is I have pictures of one that Shell Lake High School just put up and we want to make it exactly what they did, cause it's wonderful.
Can we make it better?
I mean, this is pretty good, not gonna lie, it has a crank system on it with cables, so it can be, you know, kinda like a bolt crank or, you know, whatever, so it can go up and down and then when you need to take it down for the winter, you know, there's clips on the top of it to take it out. Like where the post would be, there would be eight of them, um, the, the post would go into like a metal tube so that if you ever have to replace one because it was struck by lightning or it was rotted out or whatever, you know, you can replace each individual post at a time. You don't have to, you know, or cut it, you know, it's just an easy wood slip out of the post kinda thing.
And we just.
The only thing I don't see on here, what's the floor made of, or is that part of the cage?
Is the what?
The floor?
It's just the, like, the gravel that's already down there. Um, you know, if a concrete business was willing to donate all the concrete to make a platform, yeah, then I might have, you know, would come back and say, hey, you know, would we approve this?
I just don't remember that, I I, all I remember is beach sand.
Oh, yeah, and I mean, some, like, the one in Shell Lake, it's just they put it right on top of grass, so they have it. But I've seen some with, you know, concrete slabs that are poured the whole, the whole way. I see some that are, you know, gravel and then there's a turf put over it, you know, kind of, um, kinda, and that's.
And that might be a cheaper way of just getting some roll-up turf.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I mean, the gravel down there, no, there's nothing wrong, you know, it's already flat in that spot, it's a batting cage, you know, but, and it's one of those where if we decided not to put a a slab now, cool, but in five years, if, you know, it was like, you know, I think this would be beneficial, you know, looking at it again.
Two questions, one, this is just the supplies?
Yes, labor's donated.
Okay. And then is this some, I don't know what has been donated or this year or not, but like Mertz rookie money?
Okay, that was my next question was.
This can have, this comes from that.
That's best stuff for baseball.
So what I wanted to say and ask was that if, you know, it comes back, you know, in the time now from the next board meeting, that supply's not donated, could you approve that, yes, the Mertz, it would come out of the Mertz rookie fund? So, if we got it, you know, we could start right away, or, you know what I'm saying, like, if it's voted, we could go do this, knowing that it's gonna be paid for, whether, maybe if, half of the supplies will be donated by a business, but the other stuff won't, you know, could we use some of that Mertz rookie fund? You know, that was the next part is, if we don't get it, can we, if we do, can, you know, any part of difference, can we use that Mertz rookie funding for that?
Who makes that decision on the Mertz rookie? Cause I don't, but I have, I don't think we.
In the past, it's been used for.
Anything sports.
Sport.
Didn't we just authorize?
Right, so I I will take you back a couple of months, uh, we established that that part, that process and procedure and that we would visit this three times a year and go over that. And that it would come before the committee of the whole here with the recommendations and and that approval process, so.
Do we have a pitching machine?
Um, I.
Or is this gonna be live pitching?
There, there is, there is one in my equipment room that I think they use, I think there's two of them, but I do think softball.
Baseball has a pitching.
Yeah, I do, I know baseball and that's kept down at the downtown field, I'm pretty sure softball does, cause they've, they've used it.
Okay, I mean, that, you'd put that in there.
You could, I mean, the power to it would be a little.
Well, that was one of my questions.
I mean, you'd have to run extension cord from like the concession stand, I think that's where the only.
Yeah, that's the only power that is.
I don't think there's anything, I'm not quite sure, um, if it would be possible.
Yeah.
You know, to do that, um.
Cause I mean, that's a long-term gripe, anybody that's had a kid that pitched or or whatever, while my kids are throwing pit, you know, throwing batting pa- practice and that's why he threw his arm out or whatever, so.
Yeah.
Preference would be if you had a machine to to use that, cause you're.
Right.
Throwing a kid.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I know now, when that goes in, we have pitching machine.
Yeah, and I.
It might still be the same one.
Oh. Sorry.
You took me the same.
I was thinking that the the cage is actually over here, not right here.
No, that's, yeah, that's just the area.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm like thinking like, that's pure sand all there, I don't remember any gravel there.
That's on a hill. Something freaky's on a hill if it's never that. Okay, good job, Brad.
Now I see, all right.
Welcome back, Brad.
It's all good now.
Okay, Kate, you have to mention.
I mean, I would like to too, but, I mean, the nice part is if we could get it up and then the power comes some other time, you know, next year or something, you know.
Sorry, the the dollar signs.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just honestly want this thing up as soon as possible, um, one, it takes up a lot of space at my house.
But you should already have the netting?
I already have the netting, yes, so that was donated by a community member that, if they're okay with me saying name, I will say it when it's appropriate.
Oh, nice.
But that was donated, um, by a community member, so we already have the cage, or the, yeah, the batting cage, I should say.
Okay, something to hang on.
Yes.
So did we establish when the three times a year we were gonna be?
The recommendation, yes, on there was July, was our next one, so I'm getting that correct, so.
Yep, okay.
So.
Like July first, right, is that what we're saying?
July eighth. I just changed it.
Yeah.
Okay.
July. Okay, cause I, that's, I was just looking at that today, saying, I guess, about emails to coaches.
Yeah.
Okay.
My my initial for today was, will, could this be approved for this to happen? And then, cause if you guys say, no, it's not happening, well, then we don't even have to go with you. Do you know what I'm saying, we don't have to, I can stop sending.
I would say, let's, let's go ahead and approve that it can happen, if it needs funding, we'll have to revisit it, I think.
On July?
On July, yes.
Well.
If it comes down to renewing the funding.
So the recommendation would be to.
Spend she can secure, she can go, she can secure donations.
I can really say, we are gonna do this, what are you, are you willing to donate, you know what you are, I see where, I get where really approving it before.
Approving a motion.
Yeah. I mean, I can show you the, like, when I really may be able to see it from here, but you can take my phone too, but, and then there's a close-up of like, here's the cables on the top and then like, here's the crank, so it's like halfway down. And then it, you know, it'll kind of, these lines right here is like where the cable would run on the cage, the crank would be here, so then it, you know, it brings it all the way up, brings it all the way down, yeah.
Mark, you got anything to add to this?
I'd like to see that picture.
Let Mark see the picture.
On your phone.
Oh, this picture.
Yep, he's got.
I've got this.
Finally.
Yeah, so like there's, and then.
Not yet.
So like, that's just to kinda see what it.
Okay, so what's the recommendation here, Brad?
I reckon, uh, Florida may just be approve. The motion to go ahead to put up.
Recommendation?
Correct.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation that they go ahead with the.
It hold, yep, it takes it up and then it takes it down to the cable, once you crank it together, then it brings all of it down and then.
So they get fundraising.
Yeah, and once, if funds are received, to go ahead with the process.
Like for the winter, you know, take it off from those clips and then.
It's not.
Then we have to wait till.
Yes, yeah, it's, well, so if it gets, like, it went all down, then just the top. No, yeah, no, the bottom, just the top goes up, yes.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was, you, just for it to happen?
Well, that's what we're.
Oh, okay.
I think we're. The business is your.
Got it, okay.
It's multiple conversations happening, so I'm not really sure what's going on.
Okay, okay, got it.
But kudos to the forward-thinking and. No, sports.
I know, I mean, we have it.
So, just to make one more thing clear, we're approving if, Sierra here.
Yep.
Gets the money, right, donation, great, that'd be, that'd be awesome. That she has the go-ahead then to start getting this cage up and going, okay? If she does not secure all the funds.
Yep. Yep.
Come back to us on the eighth, we chit-chat about how we can work that.
And that's the next meeting of the whole one, or is that the Mertz rookie one?
Yeah, yes. The Ritz. Both. Well, that's gonna be a whole board meeting. We will be talking.
So they are also going to, got it, okay, the ones that are on, okay.
Yes, yes.
So, and also work with Mark.
On what?
Just make sure he knows what we're up against.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got you, I see what you're saying, okay, okay.
Is everybody?
Cause you send you on the net out of your home.
I mean, I just.
So he would probably have to find a place for it in the wintertime.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, the concession stand is down there, that's the great spot, I mean.
It'll fit fine in there.